Thank you so much Josh and Christie for being a community partner. Mayor DZ, next up and council, next up is, like I had said earlier, a person that really needs no introduction in our community. And that's Dr. David Englethaler with TGen North. As we all know, TGen North is focusing on infectious disease research with a specific mission to advance clinical medicine, public health and bio defense. So, Dr. Englethaler, as I had mentioned earlier, prior to joining TGen, he was the state epidemiologist and state bio defense coordinator for Arizona. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Englethaler. And Dr. Englethaler, thank you so much for being with us this evening.
Yeah, you bet. I'm really honored to be here. And so, thank you Andy, and thank you Mayor and Vice Mayor Daggett and council members for hosting this part of your session around COVID. You get an update from a lot of individuals that have been playing such an important part in this community. And it's been an honor to work with them over these past many months. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Dave Englethaler. And I know most of the individuals on council have interacted with some people going back multiple decades, actually. So it's great to be here with you and be part of Team Flagstaff, which we definitely are here at TGen. I'm not going to talk very much about TGen this time. I did that last time. As you know, TGen was the first diagnostic lab to start testing for COVID outside of the state lab in all of Arizona. And we've been able to be right here supporting the city and the county for these many months. And we've been the primary site for genomic analysis and sequencing of the virus. And I'll talk a little bit about what we're learning from that and what we're learning around the, with the work around the country in that regard. Can I just get a confirmation that you can see my slides?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, and please interrupt if anything seems to go wrong. And I'm going to go through some updates that you haven't heard. We'll talk about some things and some things I think that are really important to focus on. Some observations as we're learning more about not only this virus, but this pandemic on the population, the effect on the population. And some of my opinions then around what we should be doing moving forward. And I also have some questions that I get asked a lot and I can hit on those and happy to answer questions from councils as well. So we'll go ahead and get started. The state of COVID, we live actually in the state of COVID right now. Arizona is the, has the highest rates of COVID infection documented in the world right now. We've been here before. We're here again. It won't last long. Other states will pass us. California is right next to us. And that also speaks a little bit to the effectiveness of strategies. Arizona and California have had very different strategies, yet we are getting hit very similarly again. We are in the winter surge. We knew we were going to be. We did not know it was going to be, you know, really this tsunami-like effect of cases. Much more so, and you can see this top graph, this is the, this is looking at the cases, the daily cases throughout the entirety of the pandemic. And there's the summer surge, which we all thought was enormous. The caseload we're seeing now, and really kind of you can vision the curve here, the amount of space under that curve is so much greater than what we saw during the summer surge. So we're having a lot more transmission than we really wanted and or expected. But knew that we were going to have certainly a winter surge because this is a respiratory virus. This is the time for respiratory viruses. And we also have, and I'll talk about this in a minute, strains that are really adept at spreading between humans that are circulating. This graph down here in the lower left hand is the amount of hospitalizations. And what we can see is that the hospitalizations has surpassed what we saw during the summer surge. But it's not as big as what we're seeing, the difference between cases now and the summer surge. So what it means is that we're, while we still have a lot hitting our hospitals and we're near capacity for sure. We're not at capacity, but we're near it. And, but it is not as proportional as it was before. And therefore, we're seeing less serious outcomes. And that can definitely be seen here in comparing the deaths between the current winter surge and the summer surge, which right now it's a little bit less with the numbers, you know, really kind of lagging behind, usually a week or two behind. We're going to probably see as much as we saw during the summer surge. But again, proportionally, it is a much lower impact than what we did see during the summer surge. So there's some good news in that, but it's the deaths that I really do want to spend a little bit of time on. Because it's, it is really important that, to me, that is the most important part, continues to be the most important part of this pandemic that we, we need to focus on and maybe less so on the number of cases. And so let's look at the fatalities here and don't worry about trying to capture all these numbers in here. But this is a breakdown by age group and by different groupings there you can see on the left-hand side. And if we look at the case fatality rate, there really is a tale of two different generations here. The younger generation, particularly younger than 20, we really see very, very, very few case fatalities. And the majority of these even are in older teenagers. And that's not to say that it's acceptable to have deaths from infectious diseases. We do have those actually every year, but it is nothing compared to what we see in our elderly population. We've known this for a long time. These numbers are still incredibly starkly different. 9% fatality rate, over 9% fatality rate in those over 65. Now, what's really good news is that number at the beginning, going back into April and May, that was at 17, 18% fatality rate in that age group. That has essentially been halved. Part of that is, is we're getting additional less serious cases occurring in the elderly. But we're also really improving our ability to treat patients as they hit the healthcare system and try to prevent them from getting into a serious situation where they may be at risk from dying. But it's still in completely different effects on these populations. Less than 2, point, less than 0.2% of the total deaths are there in that younger age group versus almost three quarters of the deaths are in elderly. And then when you put in the other known high-risk groups, people with multiple comorbidities, we are well over 85% of deaths are in people that we know are highest risk. And I think we could have done more and continue to do more to prevent those deaths. So in reality, this, I've been saying this for a while, the kids are all right, the grandparents are not. They, that is where we need to spend our time and attention, I believe, moving forward. Here's just another way to look at this and sorry for the detail on this. But what, all you can do is picture, these curves are different age groups. And up in the upper right, or excuse me, upper left, this is zero to 14 years. This is 15 to 24 years there in the middle. And then at the bottom here, there's 65 to 74, 75 to 84. And this is looking at total deaths this year. And you can see the coloring here, it's yellow and it moves into blue. That is COVID deaths versus all the other causes of deaths that occur. And we can see that in these older populations, it really is a significant proportion of deaths. It's not the majority of the deaths, obviously. It is a fraction, but it's a significant fraction. But again, if we look at the, here, the younger teenagers and younger, you can't even see the presence of this in the, the causes of deaths in this age group. So it's just another way to look at that. One other thing to think about with deaths is really been the COVID impact on our Native American communities. And we had some presentations about that earlier today. This is something that has been, obviously, we've seen the devastation being so close to Navajo Nation and watching what's happening with our other close tribal neighbors. It has gotten better, but we still are in this place where, while Native Americans make up less than 5%, about four and a half percent of the population in the state. And that is pretty close to the amount of cases that they make up. They make up 9% of the deaths. And therefore, you know, essentially it's showing a two times increased risk of death for Native Americans of all ages. And if you look on the right-hand side here, this is from CDC and looking at age group differences in deaths. We know the dark blue, this is actually showing white, non-Hispanic white or Caucasian versus American Indian and Alaskan native populations. And the dark blue is the white populations. And here, this over 70, over 80, that's where we're seeing all the deaths. But if we look at Native American populations, that's not the case. It is in our 50 to 60 to 70-year-old populations that are really seeing the majority of the deaths. So there really is a difference in, in different populations. And so this is something we have to continue to look at, try to understand why. We do know that a lot of it has to do with increased comorbidities in these age groups versus in non-tribal populations. But also has other things such as access to care, timely access to care and testing and all of those pieces. I just, I just had to point that, that particular piece out. Another view and looking at deaths, and sorry to be so dark on this, but I think this is, to me, is still the most important part of this pandemic, is looking at what's happened in the U.S. this year versus previous years. So this is, this is looking at four years from 2017 to 2020. And this trend line that we see here, this orange line, is essentially the threshold that is established through some statistical processes to say that above that you have excess deaths for the year. Unanticipated or an aberration that can be due to a specific cause, in this particular case, COVID-19. So this, everything above the line here represents additional deaths in this, in these individual weeks essentially throughout the year. And we can see that we had a lot of this occurring in April and May. And in fact, about 35% of deaths were excess deaths, or as high as 35%. And now getting down to 10% or lower. And overall, we're going to see probably on average about 10 to 15% increase in deaths this year over previous years overall because of this. And we can even look at this a little bit locally. This is one of the graphs from Coquenino County that wasn't shown. Looking at essentially a, the green line is really a five-year average. And this is, these are the months of 2020. The red line is what would, that establishes a historical limit for deaths within each of those months. And we can see through, from March through October, we definitely went above that line. And we know again, who these people are and the vast majority of those, because we knew who they are, I do believe were mostly preventable had we put the efforts and the focus on them. Unfortunately, specifically in Coquenino County, a lot of these, again, were Native American and were probably not as preventable because of not great access or timely access to healthcare to quickly respond to them. But we are seeing in November and December, even though all the numbers aren't in yet, that we have fallen out below the historical limit. And this is partly because in December, or in the winter months, we see a natural increase in deaths anyways. And we just have not surpassed that here in Coquenino County, which is good. One more thing that's come up a lot is comparison to influenza and how, you know, in some cases, people were, were saying, well, this is like a strong or a worse influenza. And in others, where people were saying, this is nowhere near comparable. And the truth is actually somewhere in the middle. What we see though is, in the younger populations, and sorry, let me point this out. The blue lines represent the last eight years, I believe, last seven years of influenza deaths by age group here. And this is really showing a infection fatality rate, which is like a case fatality rate. And, and the red lines are a number of different studies that have been documenting the fatality rates of COVID around the world in these different age groups. And so we can definitely see trends. Flu, interestingly, almost every year follows this same trend. And we, we know what that is. It's, it is, you know, it's pretty painful in the youngest, but much more painful in the older populations that are at high risk. COVID, when you compare, is actually less dangerous in the very youngest pain, or very youngest age groups. It's less deadly, but once you get to about 10 years older, between 10 and 20, it starts to act very similar to flu. And as you get out of that, getting up to 30 years old and higher, all of a sudden COVID, you have almost a three times increase in risk of death. Upward, as you get up into the elderly populations, up to 14% or, excuse me, 14 times higher risk of death from COVID than from flu. So they really are comparable in some regards, but COVID has been much, much worse in our older populations without a doubt. So let me just spend a couple of minutes on what I'm seeing and my observations, especially thinking genomically. We know that COVID-19, the virus, the SARS-CoV-2 virus, is evolving. And it does have different strains that are being spread around. It is now spreading faster than our ability to prevent it. And it actually has been for many months. But we still know who we have to protect. And those most serious are, excuse me, the highest risk populations. COVID-19 originally seemed to cause a serious SARS-like disease. And we remember SARS from 2002, 2003, very serious pneumonia and, and didn't spread, continued to spread very far. Wasn't as transmissible as this. This seems to spread more like influenza. And therefore, shutdowns and travel bans actually did seem appropriate early on. That seemed to make sense. But the, what happened is what I call COVID-20, which is not an official moniker. But this was the major strain that was first seen in Italy and in Europe in February of 2020. And it quickly spread throughout Europe and into the Americas and dominated, essentially replaced everything else that was coming out of China. Of course, this strain originated out of China, showed up in Italy and France. But this became the dominant strain. And it's typified by a mutation in the spike protein. And you know, the spikes on the outside of the coronavirus that seemed to allow it to get into host cells faster, replicate faster and get out faster. What happened is it turned this very serious disease into something now that spread more like the common cold. And it really allowed these cases to grow much more exponentially than was occurring originally. So we didn't see the same effect of what was happening in Asian countries early on, when it really took hold in the Americas. And it took off like wildfire and many other metaphors we could use. And now, the, the thought of a COVID-21, discussions, a lot of this in the news. And I'm not trying to perpetuate any rumors, but there is a new strain that has come out of the UK in late 2020 and in December, really seemed to take a foothold throughout United Kingdom and now spreads many, many times more rapidly than what was actually already there, which we knew was more than we could handle. And the concern is this is now spreading around the world. The, we first really heard about this before Christmas and now everybody's been looking for it. It's now in, I believe, over 20 countries, probably closer to 30 countries have been documented. And it's now been documented in at least four states, Georgia being the most recent, California, Colorado and Florida. But it's much more likely in most of the states or in many, many more states in the U.S. It seems to spread much faster, but not cause, again, not cause a more serious disease than what we were seeing. And we're seeing more and more younger cases. That's what we started seeing during the last half of 2019, a younger demographic spreading it very easily. So our college-age kids are going to spread this really quickly. So given that, you know, this is, seems maybe what's happening is what has happened with other human coronaviruses in the past. And the only successful strategy for human coronaviruses to go on and survive has been to become more transmissible and less pathogenic, become the common cold virus. This may be what's happening. This may be some good news. It's still very, it's too early to say that's what's happening. But that might be what we have to deal with in a few years with this particular virus. It just may become easier spread and less pathogenic. One of my other observations, and these are obvious observations, is that the unseen mental health pandemic has, you know, is tremendous. And it has been exacerbated by our response efforts. The lockdown, the closing of schools has really led to a toll that's going to take many, many years to really understand and, and much longer to recover from than the actual virus itself. We do know, you know, in some circumstances, there's been documents of, you know, not only increased depression rates, suicide rates, the number of drug overdose deaths this year is off the charts and continuing to increase. And part of that is people are actually getting, strangely enough, they're getting worse drugs. It's harder to actually distribute drugs in some circumstances. And so you have a lot of kind of homemade fentanyl-type drugs that are causing more and more deaths from overdoses than we would have normally seen. But there is just a lot more usage and calls to crisis centers. And I am very, very concerned about this. And then, I really do think vaccines are our only way out of this dark tunnel. We cannot continue to just let this thing wash over us and try to achieve herd immunity naturally, especially as we prolong that by locking things down and trying to prevent spread. It just means the pain is going to last much, much longer. Vaccines will get us out of this. The vaccines are off the charts, way more amazing than we thought they would be. The effectiveness is just incredible. The reported effectiveness of the two vaccines that are being put into arms right now. The, there's lots of, there's always lots of consternation and argue about how, how good the vaccine is or it's getting, it's too slow to get out. The, the public health folks and Director Muslman, one of them and her team are, have done an absolutely amazing job. The scientists who developed this vaccine have gone way above and beyond. There's never been a time in history when you could invent, design a vaccine, develop it, test it, trial it, produce it, get it out to the world and start getting it into people's arms within the same year. Never would have thought of this. Only Hollywood would have thought of this. But we've done it and the vaccine, and I mean, with the collective, we, and that includes the federal government that actually had the foresight to just put all the chips on the table, pay for the development and manufacturing so they could just start pushing this out. And now it's, now millions of people have been vaccinated in this country and many millions more will be. And in fact, I believe, it's my prediction that by March, we'll have as many people vaccinated as have we've had cases, which means that we will have a tremendous amount of what's called herd immunity. I like to think of community immunity around the country. And that's really going to help cases to drop fast. So vaccines, critically important. I'm not a fan of mandatory compulsory vaccines, but I am a fan of every leader getting out there and talking about how important vaccines are. So this is, that's my pitch to you, Mayor and the council. My recommendation, strategy, or my recommended strategy has always been prevent deaths, do what we can to prevent deaths and then limit overall harm. And, and I do have a history as, during my introduction, of public health emergency response. Actually, I was the public health emergency response coordinator for the state of Arizona for a number of years as well. And, and in this case, it's to use the least restrictive means to achieve the maximal positive effect. And I really do think that we have to use the best of science as well as intentional humanity. It's not just all about the science. And science really has to stop being used as both a punchline and as a weapon. But we really need to use it to, as a tool to illuminate the best way to serve each other and to respond to this. And I do think that some sides think that they're, they have the capture on science, like it's a football to own and it's not. It's, it is something that we just generally improve our knowledge and then we use that knowledge to, to best respond. And I, and I think a best response is a balanced response. I think we need to have focused actions, targeted tactics to stop the spread to the most vulnerable because they will continue to die if we don't. And then general actions, these broad-based tactics to slow the spread in the general public and not thinking about trying to stop the spread. We cannot do that. This virus is definitely better at spreading than we are at stopping it. But what we can certainly do is protect the most vulnerable. This is a philosophical point and I won't get into it here and happy to discuss this with somebody else, somebody at another time. But I, I think that it's really important when making policy decisions that we don't get into one of these camps that the, and I really don't think that the ends justify the means and I don't think the means justify the ends. And you could probably guess what that means in this particular case. But I just think that we've got to be a bit more balanced in our approach. So I do think there's a role for everyone. And that starts off, if you're young and healthy, you should be acting like you're a possible carrier and do the things to limit the spread to others. And that means masking and distancing and getting your vaccine. Whereas if you're elderly or at high risk, you should act like everyone else is a carrier and protect yourself. So you have a role to protect yourself here, shelter in place or have a very small social bubble. There's lots of great social services out there to support these individuals. Absolutely, they're getting devastated by the, the mental health impacts of this. But I want them to survive, to be able to recover from those mental health impacts. And they need to get the vaccine as well. And then as we're continuing to work hard to protect each other, I really do think we got to really work hard to treat each other like we're worth protecting. And I see too much vitriol still as we're trying to get through this. I think we're, you know, this is how I think of it being together, not that it's just a collective, but that we each have a role here and we can do something important. So some of the questions that come to me as a, as a research scientist or as an infectious disease epidemiologist and former public health official, should schools be open? I absolutely think they should. As I've pointed out, schools, our kids are in a situation where they're not being tremendously affected by this. And closing schools for diseases which they are tremendously effective, does it, affected by, does not seem to help. In the past, the scientific studies have shown time and time again. So I do think schools should be open. Universities, that's, it's in a different category. I support what NAU is doing. But their 18 to 20-year-olds and 18 to 23-year-olds are not the same as 5 to 14-year-olds. What about surfaces and FOMI transmission? You know, very early on, we, everybody jumped in, started wiping down everything because we found out that the virus could live on surfaces. Well, the problem is now, after many, many months of looking, we're not really seeing any transmission associated with contaminated surfaces. Very, very few suspect transmissions have occurred from surfaces versus the inhalation of the virus by, from someone else who's nearby that is expelling the virus by coughing or sneezing or singing or yelling or whatever. So I don't want people to stop cleaning surfaces. I think it's important. But I don't think it's an important part of COVID-19. I think it's actually done a lot to prevent flu this year, which has been great because we've been seeing very, very little flu. And so I think the things we're doing for COVID are really good for flu and they're only okay for COVID. What's up with masks? And there's a lot of, you know, masks have been a mess from the beginning, the discussions around masks and the recommendations. And I won't go through all of that. But the, but masks add a layer of protection. They, you know, any type of covering adds some layer of protection and better covering adds better protection. And so it's not a, it's not a cure-all. In fact, most people now that are getting the virus have been wearing masks and have not been in high-risk situations. So we know that it doesn't prevent spread, but it helps to slow spread. It helps to maybe prevent droplets from getting from one person to another in some circumstances. So they're still very important. We need to be doing that. And it's a minimal, it's a least restrictive means to have as much impact as possible. Do we need another lockdown? Here's the opposite. This is the most restrictive means. And I, and I really am opposed to general lockdowns. I think very specific circumstances, I think the, you know, for the preventing spread to the vulnerable, but not across a population. We've seen how much devastation. We have to own that now. We have to see that that's occurred because it has occurred. We can't start, start thinking, well, you know, that's, that's been overblown. It hasn't been. It's, it's been devastating not only to the public psyche and individual psyche, but also obviously to the economy. What can we forecast for the next six months? So we're at the beginning of the year. Happy, happy new year. Out with the old, in with the old essentially right now. We still have this virus with us. Thankfully, vaccines are here and are going to be what gets us out of this. Thank thankfully, vaccines are here uh, and and are um, gonna be what gets us out of this. Uh, but it will take a while for them to to really have an effect. I do, I do think within about three months, we will be seeing enough immunity from vaccines and cases that case levels will drop down, but it's not gonna go away. And it won't be until June, until we have really, um, hopefully 50% of the population maybe vaccinated. Uh, and and then with then the number of cases and immunity from cases, we're gonna uh, really start to see this this virus being vanquished enough that we can really start interacting as humans again and 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 seeing each other face to face. Um, but the, but the virus won't go away, it's still gonna be around and we do need to take care for the next six months. And then the last one I had was will virus, will the virus evolve enough to require new vaccines? Well, it's definitely evolving and it is changing and it's changing the flavor of the virus and and how it acts. But it's not going to be evading the whole immune response uh, right away. Uh, that takes a a real significant amount of change to the the viral genome. Uh, and and that usually doesn't happen until after years of um, what we call selective pressure. You have a vaccine and you can get some escape mutations, potentially that build up. And then those can go on to transmit to to others. I think that will uh, take a, at least a couple of years uh, for it to potentially get past the vaccine. Uh, but we're gonna be monitoring that and hopefully updating the vaccine every year or every couple of years like we do with influenza. Uh, and and I think that may be what we just do, we just get our flu shot along with our our COVID shot uh, every year uh, and and potentially uh, maybe every other year, depending on how long immunity lasts. And with that, I do have to give one shout out to TGen. Uh, we, I've I've called this group the genomic first responders, they were first in. Uh, started developing assays back in January, have been going non-stop, still doing a lot of work. Uh, so you have some beautiful heroes in 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 the community that you guys don't get to see uh, very often. But uh, these, these are um, an amazing group of of people that uh, have, are are absolutely honored as I am to to serve the community. So we're glad to be your partner. Uh, with that, Mayor, I may have taken too much time, but I'll, I'll turn it back over uh, to you and and happy to answer any questions that you or our council members have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Engelthaler. And honestly, I could listen to you probably talk about this for another hour or two, frankly. Uh, so I mean, the work that you're doing, your team is doing, the the also the the very data-driven, yet also holistic and human uh, aspect of your approach. I really, really appreciate, so thank you. I believe you are and your team are such an asset to our community and to this whole effort in fighting COVID in general. Uh, I do have a few questions from our council members, so I'll, I'll start with them. Uh, Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Dr. Engelthaler, thank you for being with us again. Um, it's good to be back with you and I feel hopeful that we're meeting up at this time with some um, good news on the horizon. Uh, I wanted to ask you specifically about post-vaccination, what that means for individuals, what it means for potted families, neighbors, uh, communities, um, what it means for restaurants. Um, after you've gotten your vaccine, uh, are you able to not wear a mask? Or can you still um, uh, transmit the virus to others? Uh, and what's, what kind of percentage of the population are we looking at having uh, successfully received the vaccine before life starts to look normal again? And in terms of policy, um, when we can start opening up and getting back to normal for sports and for movie theaters and restaurant going and all that other good economic stuff that we wanna be doing?
Yeah, great, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Aslan, I think that these are, these are what we um, what we're gonna be learning. The the answer to your question, we we don't know fully yet. But we're gonna be learning, especially now as we have millions of people vaccinated and we're gonna be watching, you know, what, are we reducing our risk of um, getting the virus and transmitting the virus? A couple of things we do know is that seven to 10 days, for that seven to 10 days after you get vaccinated, you are as much risk as if you didn't get vaccinated. So um, you still need to absolutely treat yourself like you're unvaccinated. But what we want is people to um, actually be acting like they're unvaccinated until they at least get their second dose. Uh, but the trials have shown us uh, that after about 10 days after the first dose, the vast majority, um, well over 90% of individuals develop enough of immune response that they don't get uh, infected, they don't become cases of COVID. For the ones that do, they typically have a much less serious disease and lower amounts of virus. So the thought is that they're gonna have a less risk of transmitting as well. So for even those that the vaccine doesn't prevent disease, uh, which is gonna be a small minority, they're gonna have less risk of of transmission. So that's why we really will be able to build up uh, that herd immunity, these community immunity that we talk about. Um, after vaccination, but we need to get enough people vaccinated. And I don't think that that's gonna happen until after March. You know, by March, we're gonna start to see that effect, we're gonna see case numbers uh, dropping off. I do think by June, we're gonna have enough that people actually can start to interact. Uh, especially if you've been vaccinated or you've been infected previously uh, in a way that we did before the pandemic, for sure. I think that if you're um, if you're at high risk, you definitely should um, get your um, immunity checked. Can we detect antibodies in you after you get vaccinated? Because you may still be at at high risk and we wanna make sure that those people are not and still, you know, try to protect them as much as possible. I do think fall and winter of 2021, we will have concerts, we will have uh, people, you know, really in in sporting events and and those types of things. I do see that on the horizon as as you're kind of alluding to.
Excellent, uh, Council, Councilwoman Sweet.
Thank you. Dave, thank you so much for your time. I have talked with you a few times about COVID and you've always been uh, just super helpful and I appreciate that. I'm wondering about the antibodies, so those who have had COVID, are there any studies showing how long the antibodies last?
Great question, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Sweet. Good to say that, congratulations. Um, I think that um, yeah, there's a number of studies and we've been watching this. So um, right now, it it really does seem like we're probably gonna get at least a year or more of immunity uh, from, you know, from either the vaccine or from an infection by and large. And that means well over 90%. Uh, and that's, we don't know if it's that long, but most of the studies now that are showing it's showing people who were infected eight months ago definitely still have high levels of antibody as well as then some of our other um, immune responses that are are harder to measure. Um, some of our white cells that actually respond really well, these killer cells that that will attack infected, uh, virus-infected cells. Uh, and so the 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 science is showing us that we are gonna have long-lasting immunity. When I say long-lasting, I think at least a year. What we know about other coro- human coronaviruses is that that can be a year to two years that that um, overall immunity. So we think that that'll last. There is definitely gonna be a small proportion of population that won't develop antibodies. But it it turns out that even those individuals, the majority of them develop other parts of the immune response that will likely prevent them from being exposed. This is why we don't have very many reinfections. Uh, we're in this, into this for a year now, a lot of people are looking for, we're looking for reinfections around the world and very few clearly documented cases of reinfection. So I think it, that just goes to show that most people develop a good immune response and that will last probably for at least a year.
Wow, thank you.
Uh, well, I had a couple of questions that they've actually been touched on a little bit. Uh, the, just to follow up, uh, so individuals who have uh, contracted COVID since March, should they be getting in line for vaccinations is one question that I had. And um, as as opposed to waiting or or whatnot, well, if somebody, for example, got uh, COVID in August, when should they get the vaccine?
Uh, great question, Mr. Mayor and and council members. Uh, we, the recommendation right now is it doesn't matter if you were previously infected. The recommendation is still to get vaccinated. Because essentially getting vaccinated, e- even if you have a strong immune response, you're just gonna give yourself another booster and you'll have a a a more robust immune response. Uh, so right now, the the recommendation is still, still go ahead. If you're in the priority group, get, get vaccinated no matter what your uh, previous history with COVID is.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then the other question, which you also touched on, but uh, regarding the the mutation that's coming out of the UK or was found to hit and come our way. Um, this, uh, these vaccines are expectedly going to continue to be just as efficacious towards these because of they are the mRNA and it has a, does it have the same protein uh, sequence or whatnot that will allow this vaccine to last for a longer amount of time with this new, new mutation coming up?
Yeah, I I think it's a, it's a great question, uh, Mr. Mayor. I think the, you know, what what has been looked at now uh, is that the the way that antibodies will attach to um, the the virus is that it would attach in number of different places, not just in one or two places. So it is possible that some of these mutations like that the UK variant has, that you may not have good antibody attachment in some locations on the spike protein, but you should had, still have a lot more effective or or a lot of additional effective uh, attachments of antibody, if that makes sense. So what, that's why it takes a real substantial change to the virus in order for antibodies to no longer be effective. So that is, that is uh, the thinking, they've definitely done the in silico analysis, that in the computer analysis to really tease that apart and doesn't look like there'll be a uh, a, an effect uh, against the vaccine with this new strain. But they are absolutely doing the the vaccine studies right now to to prove that.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, we do have a comment from Councilmember Solis and a question from Ms. Hanson.
Dr. Engelthaler, first, let me um, give you some hearts. Some grateful, grateful, uh, grateful uh, to you, your team and our um, AZ genomic first responders. Um, in fact, uh, you have, I mean, TGen has um, been around for so many years doing some, some great work. And my son, actually, he's in second year, uh, George Mason University now, taking up bi-science. But he did a dual enrollment and uh, did some lab work at TGen a few years ago. Um, would you be so kind to uh, uh, share the the PowerPoint presentation that you shared with us tonight? Because I'd love to to have it and share it with with our constituents. You know, my key takeaways is our, you know, community immunity, community immunity. Um, and um, use the least restrictive means to, necessary to achieve max, maximum positive efforts. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, uh, thank, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Solis, it's always great to see you, thank you for the very kind words. I'd be happy to to share the the PowerPoint with you.
Yeah, thank you, I was actually gonna ask the same thing, I was, I I really liked the whole presentation, all the graphics and everything that would be real helpful to share with the community, especially as we uh, try to communicate heavily on getting people vaccinated in our community. The more we speak up about it, the better and um, but I